...with two potential three-year extensions.
That's correct.
And I'm not clear, that sounds fine, but I'm not clear how, exactly how that would work. How would, there's also a term in the contract that says that either party can terminate the contract with 30 days' notice.
That's correct.
So notwithstanding that the rental or use rate is $40,000 a year, it really looks to me like $3,333 a month.
That's correct. Well, that's, when we negotiated the contract out, he preferred to pay on a monthly basis.
But it's not just that, because the contract is terminable at any time with 30 days' notice.
That's correct.
In fact, if it were terminated six months into the contract, there wouldn't be an obligation to pay more than the $20,000.
That's correct.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, I just wanted to be clear about that.
After that one-year contract, we will be coming back to council with the new three-year extension if that's chosen, which means we can deal with any of the smaller problems that are happening, and that was the intention of that.
That's a question that I have for you, is that I think it's a good idea to have the one year so both parties can look at it after the year and see if it makes sense, or if there's any changes that we want to have happen. I want to be clear that if one of the changes that we want to have happen is the rate, that that can be discussed at that time.
It is negotiable.
Yeah, it's negotiable every time.
Negotiable, notice it says, "The extensions have to do with written agreement of both parties," and the agreement is essentially an opening that says we both have to be happy, and we're only happy if the rates increase, or he's only happy if the rates decrease. Now, it may go both ways.
I understand.
Thank you, any other, one other question?
Okay, the contract requires that Player Capital keep books and records and receipts, and it's fairly detailed, but there's not exactly any consequence to that since it's not a percentage fee in terms of the revenue that Player Capital receives.
It's a pretty loose requirement because, first of all, we're getting a flat fee, so those numbers don't have to be executed so much, as it is a learning tool for staff. If we can get the numbers of people that are playing at the courts, how many courts they use every month, that'll be a great tool for us to have for the future. Should we decide we want to go to another vendor five years down the road, or whatever, we'll have some really good numbers to work with, as opposed to now, besides, you know, Alan's been very helpful, and also, which I'd like to recognize Alan, you know, he's been our tennis pro out there for 19 years, and love him, hate him, whatever, he's done a good job with the people, the kids in the town that have taken lessons from him, and I thank you for being here tonight, Alan, just shows where you're from. But, you know, that's why it was set up like that, so.
Councilmember DeGolia, just from my perspective drafting this, it's important, potentially, to know at the end of the first year of the going forward, if he says, "I've only done this, I've only done that," and we say, "Great, let's look at the books." So I think it's just a backup and a safety check for us, so we don't have to take, you know, have a confrontation at that time, we've got the ability to go in and look at the books.
Right, and it's more about numbers, we're not asking what he's charging for lessons.
Yep.
Right? We're just saying, how many people are out there?
Actually, correction, if I read it, we are asking him what he's charging for lessons.
He included it in his proposal.
He's got to include books of account and invoices, so, which I think is good. I think your purpose is a good purpose, I just wanted to clarify it.
I have to ask Bill a little less than a question.
What matter, you have a question?
Sure. Bill, in the contract, it talks about, you know, managing and making sure that, you know, they're the only pro out there, et cetera. So enforcement, it's clear that enforcement is their obligation to do, not ours, and then in other areas.
Let me answer that question, that's an important question.
This is a contract.
Right.
The contract establishes parameters. I would assume that if they see other pros out there giving lessons, and they say, "Hey, look, I have an exclusivity arrangement," that the other person will either be a gentleman and a professional and honor that, or it will come back to us as we need to write a cease and desist letter because of the fact that we have a specific arrangement, he's paying us money to use the courts, you're not, so stop what you're doing, or we'll take action.
And that signage will be placed at the court also?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, like we had before. Okay, all right, and then, secondly, you know, he's going to be notifying us, and the contract says, you know, he'll let us know if there's maintenance issues, but the court is, you know, kind of is accepted for activity on an as-is, where-is basis. And, you know, of course, over time, he'll make recommendations to us to, for potential improvements, but it's our obligation, or not our obligation, our right to choose to do what we need to do, and the maintenance is going to be essentially as is, as is being prepared today.
Yeah, and please note that they do say that if the contractor agrees to extend, that they will pay us $15,000 towards court maintenance each extension.
Yeah, but that's for three years.
Correct.
For three years, and, right, and it's, that covers three, three courts to be done, based on our past experience. But, okay, thank you, Bill.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing no more questions from council members, can I get any public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments on the item?
Alan's going to make a comment.
Fast, sorry, Alan. You know, looking quick.
Charging the net.
Charging the net, thank you. Having been here forever, Park Foundation and everything else, to make this move forward, I would like to bring to your attention that MCE, as you know, is very over busy, so the courts don't get taken care of. Mike was out there with a blower this week, I brought mine last week. I want you to know that it's not taken care of. As we move forward, it would be great to have some sort of system that either, it was either outsourced, or taken care of, or Mike took care of it, and there was an arrangement made, so those courts are at least playable halfway decent, not full of leaves and dirty and things like that. I mean, I think that's important. That's the main complaint as well, these courts aren't any good, these courts aren't. So if we can get past that, so that it's on a weekly basis cleaned, maybe, a strange thought, maybe even washed, because the only time it gets washed is when it rains, and then we go out and squeeze you to clean. So those are thoughts just to think about, and that will help all of us in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments, bring them back to council. Any council member have a final comment? Councilwoman Lewis.
So I just, I received an email from resident today asking that her letter in support of Player Capital be submitted to the public record, and it was the same letter that she sent back in July, and it's Torrey, Will Frat, 10 Millold Avenue, in support of Player Capital.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Vice Mayor DeGolia.
When we compare what we can do to improve the facilities in Hoover Cola Park, one of which is the tennis courts, I think that it's important to look at the options that we have, and this option is a terrific option. And it not only is an improvement economically, but it's going to bring an organized group that we all in our, in our supplement to the pack that's received many letters from residents of the town supporting this because their children play in the Player Capital program. I just think it's a really good thing for the town. I think that we do have an enigma in terms of how we properly maintain these courts. We haven't invested the resources, and hopefully, the increased dollars that are coming into the town will enable us to put more MCE resources into taking care of them. There are bigger picture issues with how to substantially improve the courts, which this revenue isn't going to be enough to do. But with a dedicated program where there are Atherton residents that are involved, and hopefully, that will also include the key holders, there's the potential to get people excited about it, which could really improve the court. So I think this is a great thing for the park, I think it's a good thing for the town, and I support.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeGolia. Councilmember Whitmer, any final?
No, I'm okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to make one comment. I would really love to have a six-month check-in and see how everything's going in the park, because we're creating a partnership, and this is something new, we're losing Alan, creating a new relationship as we move forward. We'd like to know what you can do, or what you come up with as far as problems, because you're going to have this scheduling thing online, some things that Councilman Whitmer had mentioned, but we'd like to know how things are going, because it would help us, help us how we manage that facility, because it is a beautiful asset for the park, and frankly, we want you to be successful, because your success is our success. And I think that the average tennis player is kind of like the average golfer, so you're probably right in line in saying, hey, you know, respect each other. So I have absolutely no problem, in approving the contract, I think that my phone was burning for the last week, majority of which were saying very positive things, and so with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the contract with Player Capital Tennis.
Sure.
A second on that, please?
Second.
And any other questions or comments? Let's call for, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you, Alan, for all your service as well.
Checked in, grew up March 2015.
That sounds good, yeah, perfect. Thank you very much, and Alan, again, thank you very much for your service and being supportive of the tennis.
All right, so let's just go ahead and move back over to item number 25, authorization to issue, require qualifications for the CCAC design. Mike Moschagl.
Yes, Mayor, these members of the council, this is the very significant step, first step, in acquiring the design services for the, for design team for the Civic Center construction. This is, what's being proposed here is a two-step process, the first step is getting authorization to send out this statement of qualifications. Due to the size and the interest that we believe this will generate, that's why the CCAC and staff believe that first doing a request for qualifications, and then using that to develop a shortlist, which we will then invite to submit full-blown proposals, you know, would work best for this, for this type of project. So that's what we're requesting here this evening. Staff, along with Mark Five, is developing the request for proposal, who will be working with the CCAC to review and come up with the final request for proposal, which will be coming to council probably in two months for your approval as well.
Exciting. Any questions from council? No questions from council.
Well, not necessarily. As we're getting ready to, you know, to move forward, both on this as the EIR, and we're spending more and more money, could potentially at a, the next meeting, could we get a status on where we are on the fundraising? Because as we're, the town keeps spending money, the question is, what's the long-term plan, and where are we, what's the status?
The town itself is not involved.
Well, I understand, but we'd have this, a CCAC report on how that's going?
The CCAC is not involved either, we can make a request to the Atherton Dow Group if they'd like to make a presentation.
That'd be great.
To the council, yeah.
Right, because we're doing our part, we need to understand where the rest of this is.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing no other questions from council, any other comments on this item from the public? Seeing no comments from the public, we're going to close the public comments, bring it back to council, 25 comments. Councilwoman Lewis.
So I just want to say that the subcommittee of the CCAC Civic Center Advisory Committee worked very diligently with staff, Gordon Seaver and George and Mike, to put together this statement of qualifications, and the subcommittee consisted of Rose Howe, Phil Widely, Clive Meridoo, and, um, is that it? Okay, I didn't want to not remember, and, and?
Paul Tinnell.
Paul Tinnell, that's right, okay.
Christine Dayman.
Christine Dayman, no, it was a big, it was a big subcommittee, but we have a big committee. They worked very hard, we have a member of this subcommittee here, if you wanted, Rose, to say anything about the process, the process, oh, Steve Doster? No.
Oh, Steve.
Of course.
Oh, just the chair.
Yeah, of the, of the Statement of Qualifications Subcommittee. And so they worked, yeah, they worked really hard and did a lot of scrubbing of the language, and I think that it's a document that's going to generate a lot of interest in the architectural field, and so I'm excited that we're moving ahead on this, and we're hoping to have the results back by October 3rd, and depending upon the number of responses we get, it's going to be a very busy week or so from the entire committee to look at all of the statement of qualifications, to hone them down to a selection for the RFP.
All right, those were the comments, any other comments? I just want to say one thing, I break it into the last CCAC meeting, and they've got the word cut out, so I'm real pleased that we're moving forward, so if I can get a motion to approve the RFP to solicit qualifications, firms for the Civic Center Design Direct staff to issue, is that a second?
Second.
All in favor, or any further? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you very much. Let's move on to item number 26, approval of the agreement with Place Works for preparation of Civic Center Master Plan Environmental Document.
Thank you. As authorized by the city council staff, issued request for proposals to firms for the environmental document preparation of Civic Center Master Plan. We received six proposals, staff evaluated those proposals and selected three firms to interview. The interview panel consisted of a CCAC member, the town engineer, myself, as well as our associate planner, and through that process, Place Works was determined by all of us to be the top firm. They have extensive experience preparing similar environmental documents for other type of government facilities, their proposed timeline to complete the document, as well as their cost proposal was very reasonable when compared to the other proposals as well. Their proposal is for the environmental impact report to take approximately six months. So their proposal is in the amount of $121,244, and staff recommends including a 10% contingency. As you know, with environmental document preparations, sometimes there's some unknowns through the process, additional public comments, and so we just want to be, make sure there's sufficient budget to cover that. The other item that we added was, following the interview, we requested Place Works provide a proposal, prepare a visual simulation of the new buildings, and this would assist the community and decision-makers trying to understand type of mass and how the buildings would site, and that additional task is in the amount of $13,440. So staff recommends the total authorization of 146, 808, to Place Works for the preparation of an EIR. Happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis, please.
So the visual presentation, would that be computer-generated or a three-dimensional model or something?
It would be computer-generated.
Okay, similar to what was presented to us by a previous architect that had done a prologue rendering course?
I'm not, I think they maybe did more of a fly-through, this may be more of a static model.
Oh, yes, so, all right.
Vice Mayor DeGolia.
So the visual simulation of the new buildings are the buildings that are in the master plan?
Correct, to simulate what they might look like in terms of massing and placement to carry.
Please.
Rick's microphone is not picking up at all, when it's up in here like that.
Rick doesn't always like to use his mic.
It would sound cool.
We'll work on it.
So the visual simulations, they're not architectural, they're bulk, mass, placement sorts of issues, not on the inside, not looking inside.
So it's mostly the master plan.
But they're also, they're not taking into account information that may have been learned subsequent to the master plan being completed, like a 36-inch water main.
All information to date, which we knew at the time of the master plan, they know now, so that would be part of their environmental.
So they may move the buildings from what they were?
The EIR process will not move the buildings, they could look at alternative locations in the analysis, but they wouldn't necessarily design that out.
Right. But they're running tandem, so they'll, they might be each other.
Is this something typical that an environmental consultant does?
The visual simulation? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm anticipating that we're going to have visual simulations from the architect once they?
Yeah, I think the interest from staff was that, to get that ahead of time, since the architect is unlike when you're going to have the architect on board and at the stage to do that, this will provide you some good kind of massing models much earlier than the architect will be able to provide.
It's not designed to inform the community of what these buildings are going to look like, it's designed to inform the community of how big a two-story building might be in terms of mass, just a visual.
Yeah, you're coming down the street, what are you going to see?
What the potential significant environmental impact might be.
Would be.
Not will be, might be.
Right. Might be. Based on the information in the master plan, because they're going to start, assuming we authorize it, they're going to start in, let's say, October 1st, they'll be done by April 1st, the architects will start, say, January 1st, they're not going to have much by April 1st.
Yeah, and there may be some interplay back and forth, I mean, the environmental studies may drive the architecture.
Sure, I understand that.
And when they get out there and start looking into it, people looking at the massing studies and the aesthetics, that's, that's the real value, I think they stand up and say, whoa, that's a lot bigger than I thought it was going to be, or smaller than I thought it was.
It's like the, a drive-through of the property with, with the reconfiguration of the roads and paths?
Yeah, we're going to need to pick several vantage points that they use with any model from, so it's not going to be a live drive-through simulation, but we can choose a view, if you're standing here, this is what you'll see.
Vice Mayor DeGolia.
Is this work considered prior to design and construction?
Yes.
So will, is it the intention that this will be paid for from general fund?
Building, general, library, correct.
Yeah, there's $200,000 was estimated in the CIP for the environmental task.
I'm aware of that.
We're under that.
But then the allocation, we'll still do the percentage allocations between building and library and the third component, rather than the privately funded funds would come from the general fund, right, because it's prior to design and construction?
Correct.
Perfect. Any other questions? Seeing no more questions from council members, can I ask if any public members want to make a comment on this subject?
We're good.
Seeing no comments, we're going to go ahead and close those comments, back to council for any final comments?
No comments.
No final comments, so can I get a motion to, all in favor, or, second on there? Second, Bill? Thank you, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, let's move on. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 27, the town arborist position. Can I get City Manager George Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's, item 27 and item 28 have a singular component similarity, and that's the ongoing, sorry, CSO code enforcement, have a singular component that's very similar, and that's the Calpers audit that the town's currently going under, so I'll walk through that once for, for both items, for the council's benefit. The town's currently involved in an audit by Calpers as part of their routine audit process, they come, maybe they started at the A's, I don't know, up to Atherton first.
They've never been here.
They've never been here in the past, so they're, they're, they pulled a number of our contracts, and they're looking for contract consistency with respect to independent contractor versus employee. So they pulled a number of contracts, they've asked us a number of questions, they've interviewed the city attorney, myself, Teresa, Robert, and others, with respect to those contracts, what those employees, contractors do, how they do it, what the town provides, what we don't provide, what the level of supervision is, what their freedom to make decisions is, who they come back to, who they report to, all kinds of things. We provided them answers, and then in a month and a half, two months from now, we should get a response from Calpers with respect to, all right, are, is that what we classify an independent contractor, contractor, or are they an employee in Calpers's eyes? If Calpers comes back and says they're an employee, then we've got another battle we might want to fight, an appeal of some kind, if there's anything available to us, we might do that. If, if not, and we lose that appeal, then we end up paying pension benefits for those particular employees that they're classified as employees, but we don't want to get into that scenario, but that's currently where we're at with respect to our current contract situation. So staff is thinking about that as we brought these two items to the council for consideration. The first is the arborist. Steve's not here, he's already left, but Mike might be able to answer some questions as well. You have the staff report, we brought the RFP to the council in the past and talked about going out for an RFP for arborist services, at the time, the council?
He's outside, he's talking.
Yeah, you should check, probably about 10 minutes. So, you know, the council's decision at that point was say, let's see what, what both markets provide, let's, let's fly an employee component of things, and let's fly the RFP and see what we can get from a contract. Well, the contract came back and said, well, for 40 hours a week, which town staff said is something we need to address all the ongoing issues, heritage tree issues, construction inspections, et cetera, things that aren't really getting done now or addressed within the 20 hours a week we have with Kevin Keelty, it's going to cost you $190,000 a year for 40 hours a week. So we also advertised for an employee, we went out and did a survey of a number of agencies, say, what do you pay an arborist-type position? We pegged the town at about 50% of that, flew that, and we got about 21 applicants, some of which are highly qualified, and that comes in at?
129,000 is the first.
Step A, fully worked.
Yeah, fully working, 129,000, that's step B, you have 149,000.
All right, 40 hours a week. All of that is less than 190,000 for a full-time position, so we're bringing it back to the council for that. What staff is also recommending, and I'll tell a personal story here, I think I told all of you this personal story, my better half, Felicia works for the city of Novato, she is currently a Public Works Administrative Manager, she is hired under a four-year limited-term contract with that city, so, but she has all the rights and benefits as an employee, but it's a four-year limited term, so after the first year, she's on probation, you know, she's also not an employee under that scenario, terminated at any time, but that's what they flew the position at, and they got a number of applicants, and she was the one that was picked. So it's been done in other agencies, staff looked at that, we've evaluated whether we could do that, the arborist position and the code enforcement officer position, frankly, our two positions were suggesting we could do a four-year limited term. It takes five years to become vested in Calpers, the employee, or applicant may already be vested in Calpers, but if they're not, they come here, they're here for four years, and we could cut them loose, we could reevaluate whether we want to do contractor or employee, we could do any number of things, we could track, with the arborist, we could track construction permits up and down, if it's starting to take, taper off after about three years, you know, maybe we don't do anything beyond the four years. With code enforcement, same thing, it can kind of go up and down as well, but four years, I think is a good time to do that. I talked with a member of council members one-on-one, we talked about, you know, one year, two year, three years, staff recommends four years, and one year, I don't think we're going to get the quality applications and quality people that you want working in Atherton, no one's going to really apply for a one-year flat job, 40 hours a week. Two years, they're just getting their feet wet, Atherton's a complicated place, particularly with the heritage tree issues and the neighbors involved, you want somebody who's grown into the community, so three years is a possibility, but we recommend four years. That's the arborist report, and it also folds into the CSO code enforcement report, which the chief can address as we get to that item.
Thank you, George. Any questions for George or any other staff member?
I'm sorry, Perry Thornnight showed up, and I saw him sitting.
I understand, you have a seat.
Yes, I have a seat.
Councilwoman Lewis.
So we do this? So, we do this four-year limited-term contract with an arborist. They get their feet wet, they start, you know, really running on all cylinders and understanding the complications of Atherton and heritage trees and they, the four-year ends and we want to keep them. So, if we do another four-year contract, that, that won't work. That then puts them into the PERS?
Well, if, if they're not vested already before they come here, which, you know, they may be, then at the fifth year, they become vested in PERS. That just means that at that point, they got, they're eligible to draw a retirement from CalPERS.
Okay. But then are, are we exposing ourselves to, you know, long-term liabilities that we are trying to avoid with the limited, like, four-year contract?
Our pension liability with respect to that particular employee is only for the amount of time that they work for the town. So, if they work here four years and then they go work for some other agency, but they become vested at CalPERS at that point, we are obligated for that four years of time for which we pay during that four years of time, employer rate and employee rate.
I think what you're asking is are they going to be enrolled in CalPERS off the bat? And the answer is yes. You just don't become vested in CalPERS until year five. And that, it's not a huge, I don't think it's a huge deal one way or the other, quite frankly. And it may be that if you want them, you didn't have to go, you could eliminate the contract, make it a full-time position and just go forward, or you could redo the contract. It just, just has to do with vesting more than anything.
I'm, I'm very supportive of, well, that was my question.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions from councilmembers? Vice Mayor Golian.
So, you answered one of my questions, which was why four years, which is Felicia.
Yes, and another agency.
The second question I had was, what is the meaning of steps A through D?
Public employees are hired at ranges. So, we appoint an employee, usually if they're coming in and they're out of the blue with limited experience, but they meet their minimum qualifications for the position, we'll appoint them at step A. Then there's a certain amount of time that goes by in a performance evaluation before they're eligible to go to step B. Unlike the private sector where we sit down and we say, okay, I'm going to give you a 2% raise this year or a 3% next year, where we'll talk about it and you're only eligible for a half a percent. We, public sector typically works off of steps. So, between step A and step B, it's usually a 5% differential. If they, if they meet or exceed the expectations, they're not getting any more than 5%. They could go to step C after another year and step D. Once they hit D, unless the town changes the salary range for that position, the only thing they're going to get year after year might be a COLA if the town adjusts its employment.
If, if the applicant has significant experience in the field, might they start at step B or C?
Yes, they may. In fact, we do that often with police officers who come in from other agencies that have significant years of experience. We'll start them at step C or D. But they don't go anywhere after that, and that's one of the challenges with doing that. They've already been topped out.
Okay. So, the third question is total, does that include the CalPERS?
Yes.
So, depending on the level of experience that the employee comes in, we could be incurring annual costs that's quite close to our current $150,000 obligation.
For 20.
Twenty hours.
I understand. Right.
Any other questions?
Well, on the, on the analysis, it's on the second, third page of the discussion, I brought this up before. If you look at this $95 that you got quote for, that then added up to 197.6, that's 2,080 hours, which means they're working 40 hours a week for 52 weeks. Yet, yet when we do our rate studies and when we look at the productivity of an Atherton resident, and really, maybe private industries, although they're normally around 1,700, you know, there's more holidays and things like that here, we're down around the 1,500 range. And so, when you factor then 25% out of that 197, actually, the, the number for, for the comparable year of a contractor is really roughly 142.5 because an employee that we get in here is not going to be working 2,080 hours. We give them paid days off, they take training, they get sick, they get holiday, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We've already went through that during our rate study. So, so that's not an apples-to-apples comparison, 197.6 to, to the number. When I look at the salary numbers, I guess you've added in, I guess, and I think you've answered this, Robert, you've added in, I guess, the 33% costs and you factored out the, the retiring costs that we have there, right? Which that came up at the 33%. So, so really, if, if somebody's at a D or we end up getting somebody at a D, it actually could be more expensive to have, based on the one bid. I realize there was only one bid, so a sample of one, you know, but it could be somewhat of an issue. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're on that.
That wasn't a question, but that's okay.
That's okay.
Robert's looking, I think I'm supposed to be answering this, but there is.
He said yes.
That's all right. Good, Robert. Any other questions from council? Seeing no more questions from council, can I ask if there's any member of the public that would like to make a comment related to this particular item? Seeing no public making any gesture to move forward, I'll close public comments. Bring it back to council. Any final comments by councilmembers?
Well, I guess on the, on the CalPERS comment, obviously, this type of arrangement, you know, depending on what comes back, you know, we would have, what they come back, you know, they're not necessarily a quote-unquote state agency that can mandate direction per se. We would, we would have the right to appeal and, and I would think that we would be in, perhaps, enjoined with other agencies who have a similar problem. And, and whether or not there's PERS costs associated with it, I guess, Bill, I would, I would want to know whether or not that obligation would actually be the town or since they're MCE employees, it would be MCEs, or they would be enjoined in our activities.
Too many unknown factors to really give you a good answer, other than generally speaking, if CalPERS comes back and says, those are really employees, then we would appeal and we would present a case to them as to why they're wrong. If in the end, we cannot convince them or ultimately a court, then the penalty is, no, they are employees.